Can the Pledge of Allegiance please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their authority for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Hi neighbors, how are you? So, the first item on our agenda tonight is the public hearing for the transfer of the cable license from Charter to Comcast. My name is Elizabeth Moulton, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and we will now open the town's public hearing on September 23rd for the cable television license transfer application of Charter Communications and Comcast Corporation. The purpose of this hearing is to hear from Charter, Comcast, and the public about the proposed transfer of the Southampton cable license from Charter to Comcast. Before getting started, I'd like to welcome all of those in attendance, and welcome both Charter and Comcast for our meeting. Under applicable law and current license, the license cannot be transferred without the consent of the license issuing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to applicable law, this hearing shall include consideration of the qualifications of the proposed transferee Comcast, including whether Comcast has the technical, legal, financial, and management ability to assume the obligations of the proposed transfer to Charter. In addition, we would like to confirm for the public and for the record that the state law and transfer application provided that Comcast must assume and comply with all of the terms of the existing Southampton Charter license, which is due to expire November 16th, 2016. We also want to hear generally about Comcast's commitment to community programming and public, educational, and governmental access, which are important parts of the existing license. We want Comcast as possible provider in Southampton to be aware of and attentive to the importance of the Southampton public access and its role at the forefront of meeting many public, town, and school cable needs. The agenda for this hearing will be as follows: First, we would invite opening statements from Charter and Comcast. We respectfully request that Comcast address its management, technical, financial, and legal ability to assume the obligations of Charter under the current license, its overall commitment to local programming and public, educational, and government access, and how operations will continue as they now are or change. Then, questions and comments from the issuing authority and the general public will be accepted. Before proceeding with testimony from Comcast and Charter, I note that we have entered the following document into the hearing record: License Transfer Application of Charter and Comcast FCC Form 394 and Comcast Cover Letter dated June 17th, 2014. And noted for the record that the hearing was advertised at a local newspaper on September 6th, 2014. Any questions or comments for Charter and Comcast should be directed to me, and I will rule whether they are in order. So, you guys better just, okay. The record of this hearing will be left open until September 30th, and members of the public or interested parties accordingly may submit written comments on this license transfer application care of the Board of Selectmen, Town Hall, Two-Town College Highway, Southampton, Mass. We will now commence testimony on Comcast license transfer application in Southampton. Gentlemen?
My name is Tom Cohen. I'm Director of Government Relations for Charter Communications in New England and New York.
Aaron Saunders, Management Manager of Government and Community Relations for Western Massachusetts Comcast.
Okay, so, I guess, yes sir.
Well, I don't know, I would, I'll defer to Comcast because I think that's what people want to hear more about.
Yes.
So, thank you first of all for having the hearing. As you mentioned, the standard review for license transfer are the financial, technical, management, and legal requirements to step into the shoes of Charter, so to speak. Comcast feels confident that we can accomplish all those tasks. My primary role currently is for the 36 cities and towns in Western Mass that are currently Comcast franchises. And at its heart Comcast is a very local company, it's a very big company, but it's local in the sense that I work out of Springfield. I work with cities as large as Springfield and as small as Buckland or Warren. And a lot of the work that is done on a day-to-day basis, as you referenced, with regard to support of PEG programming, we have some very robust PEG operations in the current footprint. Northampton, Amherst come to mind as organizations that operate a tremendous amount of original programming, and we're proud to support that in a number of ways. Our community involvement although goes beyond just the PEG program and the license in and of itself, Comcast offers what we call a Leaders and Achievers Scholarship that's awarded to a high school student in every high school in our footprint, and we're excited that Southampton would be brought into the fold there. We, on an annual basis, hold, it's called Comcast Care Stay. It's the single largest corporate volunteer event in America, and we've engaged in projects from cleaning up community gardens to painting early education facilities, volunteering with the Boys and Girls Clubs in the area. And it's not only Comcast employees, but we get a chance to work with a lot of the regional nonprofits and community organizations in the area. And our support of those organizations goes beyond just the one day a year on Comcast Care Stay. We are proud partners with the, as I mentioned, the Boys and Girls Clubs regionally. We have a tremendous working relationship with the Urban Leagues in the area and a number of other civic and community organizations, and that is what we hope to bring here in Southampton in partnership with the Board, and looking forward to serving the community.
Are there any questions that the Board would like to ask?
Just a couple of demo questions. We have Charter here now, Comcast comes in. What's the difference, the real difference is between if Comcast took over for Charter, plus or minus pros or cons? Is there more available stations, cost, selection, restrictions, any of that?
So, that's what I think. Yeah, and I think this is maybe the fourth or fifth time that Tom and I have been at a hearing together of this kind, and there are some very strict antitrust laws that keep Comcast from looking at the existing plant here. It's important that we continue to operate as two separate companies until the point in which the merger is approved and the deal commences. From that point Comcast is going to have a tremendous amount of work to do, looking at the physical plant, looking at the existing channel lineups and program guides and all the rest. You know, I think it certainly sense that when the clock strikes midnight and the transfer happens, that customers aren't likely going to see a change at that moment. It's going to be a bit of a process, and a lot of my role will be working with the towns as those changes occur and as they're implemented.
But it is also pretty safe to say that if you look at the two companies, we offer the same services. Charter offers a whole range of digital video services, high-speed internet and telephone. Comcast offers the same. On the cable television or video side, there's, we both offer pretty much all of the programming that's available today. So, I don't think that the total range of video programming will be that different between Charter and Comcast. There might be different packaging and pricing and that type of thing, but for example, the basic service is still going to be the broadcast channels and the PEG access channels, et cetera.
I guess going back to Aaron's?
Yes.
And I feel as, I don't want to say it the wrong way, but it seems like kind of the answer on the question, in the sense that you want us to vote on whether this is positive for the town or not. Is that what we're looking at here?
I think, I don't think we have to vote on anything.
Or is it a foregone conclusion?
Pretty much.
Okay.
It's the four, it's those four elements is the only thing the Board can consider. The financial, the managerial, legal, and technical ability of Comcast to take over Charter, that's all the Board has any ability to vote on.
The selection of product, the cost of the product, all that.
So, it's technical, managerial, legal, and financial, that's it. That's the only thing the Board can.
Financial from what point of view? Are they solvent enough to take over, or financial?
Comcast's ability financially speaking as an entity to be able to take over.
Not how it will affect our employees.
No. That's not one of the criteria you can consider. It's only those other four.
Okay, that's kind of limits our ability.
So, can I ask why?
Could I just ask that you state your name and address?
Sure. Joanne Alderman, 48, High Street. And I'm sorry, I missed the beginning, so you may have already said this, but why are we considering this at this point?
So, I don't think we're considering it. This is Comcast buying out Charter, and so it happens that.
Oh, buy it. I didn't realize that.
I mean, maybe that's not the right word, but.
I'll just say, a little bit of background on what the overall deal is, is that Comcast is merging with Time Warner Cable. And while that doesn't impact Southampton specifically, part of that overall agreement is the transfer of subscribers both from Charter to Comcast and from Charter to Comcast to Charter in different parts of the country. One of the areas where Charter subscribers are being transferred to Comcast is here in Western Massachusetts. So, that is largely what brings us here tonight. The federally mandated hearing, which, again, the Board doesn't have to take action. If it doesn't, then it's assumed to move forward, but as was correctly stated, those are the four criteria that are the standard of review for a transfer application.
So, unless the Board thinks that, you know, Comcast can't technically take over or can't, you know, assume the legal responsibility or the financial responsibility, there's not really much that we could do to stop it.
No, I think the real review is happening in Washington. The Federal Communications Commission, the Federal Trade Commission, and the Department of Justice are all looking at both transactions at the same time. First of all, the Comcast-Time Warner transaction, which was announced probably six months ago, and then the Comcast Charter transaction, which was announced, I think around May 1st. And all three federal agencies have agreed to review both transactions at the same time. So, if the, if and when the Time Warner Comcast deal is approved, then the Charter Comcast one will probably follow immediately thereafter. And what's happening, Charter will continue to exist as a company. We will cease to exist in New England. Today, we have about 325,000 customers in New England, but we're really spread out. We have 53 towns in Massachusetts, some systems up in Vermont, Connecticut, Plattsburgh, New York, a few in New Hampshire. We don't have the cluster of systems that is the most effective way to operate cable systems. So, our deal with Comcast is that we will be swapping our New England systems, including Western Mass and Southampton here, to Comcast, and in exchange, we will be, in total, we're trading to Comcast one and a half million customers, our East Coast customers, our West Coast customers. In return, we're going to get about a million and a half customers from Comcast that today are Time Warner customers in the Midwest. So, Charter will become a much bigger cable company in the Midwest and will no longer operate in this area.
We're actually creating monopolies. Now, we have kind of an oligopoly where you guys can, there's two.
Well, we don't compete in the same towns or operate in the same towns today. I mean, our competitors, and that's true for both of us, are DirecTV and the Dish Network, which today are the second and third largest video providers in the country. And you add Netflix into the picture, they're becoming, they're the biggest these days. They have more customers than anybody. So, this transaction will not eliminate competition from any particular community because traditionally, though we have non-exclusive licenses in every town where we operate, the economics of cable is such that it's pretty unlikely that somebody will make the same investment that Charter did here to compete with us. The exception, and it's not happening here, is the traditional telephone company. So, Verizon in parts of the country, including a lot of Eastern Mass, and AT&amp;T in a lot of states, they are, they have built systems to compete with cable companies. They own the poles. They already have wires to every house in the community. So, it's much more likely that they'll be the competitor, but we have very significant competition from the satellite companies.
One question, I know a Time Warner Comcast merger is still being looked at. If that doesn't go through, would that affect this merger? Is one dependent on the other?
If the first one doesn't happen, the second one won't.
So, that's.
So, we're essentially asking each of the towns as the issuing authorities to approve this contingent upon the transactions being completed.
So, is there anybody in this?
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Anybody in this whole system of what's happening, looking out for the customer in terms of, you know, the impact of cost on the customer?
Certainly, and I think Comcast has issued a statement on public benefit, generally in customers individually, and again, we operate 36 systems here in Western Mass. And again, I live in Ludlow, I'm a Charter customer. The cost differences are, aren't significant. There are some state-driven costs on basic packages, but that's not always defined by the cable company. For what I see in our rate cards and what I pay as an individual in Ludlow, it's not much different at all.
Yeah, the basic service in Southampton is still regulated. That's just the limited basic service. The real cost that we pass on to customers is programming, so that it's largely the professional sports programming that is driving up the price for cable. But we'll often be criticized that our rates go up faster than the Consumer Price Index. But the Consumer Price Index is kind of a typical basket of consumer goods and that people follow that. Our costs are very different. It's programming that's related to professional sports and the movies, movie industry. And those are both industries that pay their talent millions of dollars a year, whether they're any good or not.
So, is there an option for the customer that if they don't want the spending of sports channels and they don't want the movie channels, that they don't have to pay?
The movie channels are usually premium channels that you have to choose to buy. The sports programming, we negotiate with the various professional leagues, the NCAA, and we're, we have to offer them to the greatest number of customers we have, so they go into that lower price package.
Just one clarification. The contract is in effect currently, we have right now to 2016, correct?
Right.
So, the rate structure is not changing on that?
The rates are not part of a cable license. The rates are, basic service is regulated, but not as part of the license.
If you want to hook up the cable and just have the basic channels, that's established as a set.
Yes. We have a rate hearing before the Mass Department of Telecommunications.
You want to add on programs like a gold program or silver program, you're going to pay extra for that.
Yes.
But that's your option, it's up to you to do that if you want it.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's true for both companies that the best value for the customer is when they bundle services, and you get discounts for each of the services.
That's a good follow-up because I know I have Charter, and you offer great packages for new customers, you bundle it, but existing customers can't get it. I asked that to the gentleman that was in here last time from Comcast. He danced a lot, he didn't answer it for us, kept saying, well, you're existing customer, you're going to be new. So, I mean, do you offer that, or it's the same thing? You treat the existing customers differently than the new customers to get them on board?
I think similarly, we have promotional packages, and there are different promotions offered at.
Promotional packages for the existing customers?
For, generally, it's for new customers.
Right. So, once you're an existing customer, in order to get the benefit of those offerings, you have to be off by at least 30 days and then come back on. That's what Charter does.
Yeah, I'd have to double-check on what the timeframe is.
But you gotta be off a period of time.
Yeah, so if there's an offer that's for 12 months at a certain price and it reverts back to a standard pricing, yeah, I think that.
Why don't you offer the loyal people better pricing than you do the people that you try to get on board? Because once they get on board, you want them to stay too. Just, AT&amp;T does it, it just hurts me that, you know, we pay a lot more than the people you're trying to get on. And like I said, the other guy gave me a response, but he didn't give me an answer. So, he said basically the same thing. We treat you differently, and I don't know what you folks think, but you know, it's a big difference in price.
Yeah, and again, I think that promotional offerings are pretty common throughout cable, regardless of which company you're looking at, or, and I think, you mentioned AT&amp;T, it seems to go beyond just cable as well.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to.
I would be willing to bet that once the change happens, if you picked, if you called and you said, this is what I was paying and this is what I got, I mean, I've negotiated our bills quite a few times, so I can't imagine they're going to say no.
Depends who you get, because some people at Charter say, no, that's it. And other people have said the same as you, so I think it's depending on the rep you get. I have, oh, go ahead.
I'm down the street, 4111. What about the service? Charter, for me, has been very good. What kind of service am I going to get from you? Like, if I have a problem, are you going to be there, or am I going to wait a week before you decide to come? Are you going to give me old equipment as opposed to when I asked Charter, because I was getting bad equipment? They sent me better equipment, if you will, if not new, and since then it's been working good for well over a year.
Yeah, well, we certainly hope to continue the good service that you've been receiving from Charter. In terms of service centers, we currently operate service centers in Westfield, Springfield, which are closest to Southampton, then we have also in Amherst and Greenfield for Western Mass. We have technicians on-call and onsite to respond to customer issues, if it's something in the house. In terms of equipment, we've been rolling out what we call our X1 platform. You may have seen commercials for it. It really is sort of cutting-edge in terms of transforming the traditional set-top box and making similar innovations with regard to cable modems and our telephone service, and also offering a home security package now. So, it's one of the things that, we have a lot of new and innovative products that are coming out, and we have the people around to answer the questions as they come up.
And if that's true, at what point will Southampton be able to get this new cost supposedly?
That's a $64,000 question. So, and that's exactly going to be the process that we're going to go through if the deal is approved and the license is transferred. Our plant operations people are going to look at the physical plan. You know, the last thing in the world that we want is someone who's a customer now that, you know, it's not as if the box is going to be turned off and you have to come to Comcast in order to watch TV. It's going to be a process, and it's going to take some time to make sure that it's as seamless as possible so people can continue their service without too much of interruption. We've got to figure out how we're going to get the new equipment to people in cases where new equipment's necessary. And once the deal goes through, you know, as long as nothing changes, I look forward to working with the town and keeping everyone informed of how that's progressing and answering questions as they come up.
Well, when you call now, are we going to be calling India, or are we going to be calling somebody in the United States?
We operate call centers in Enfield and Chelmsford locally. There is, I think, during high vol, call volume areas, we do have partners, and there are times that the calls will be sent overseas, but, you know, we do our best to make sure that everyone who answers a call on behalf of the company can provide the information, the answers that we need. And again, it's a function of, excuse, it's a function of my job if there are concerns from residents to work with the town and the cable committee to have those addressed, certainly around customer service.
If there is a problem, getting service from you, do you go to the cable, Town Cable Committee, or do we, you know what I mean? If you're giving us a problem, who do we go to?
If you, well, and this is something, it comes up from time to time, and I can think of an instance in a neighboring town where there was, there was a bad wire underground. And I think, you know, it was three different boxes, and it wasn't working out, and everyone's scratching their heads, and the call got escalated relatively quickly through our customer service. It went to our technical operations folks. They were able to trace it out, replace the underground wire, and get it squared away. If there is an issue that's not being solved or being solved to your satisfaction, then certainly that's why the cable advisory committees exist, and that's why people like me have relationships with them to make sure that the issue's got addressed.
Just a point of reference on what he says, sometimes cable committees don't meet in a timely manner. If he had an issue where he can't get satisfaction to his, can a call from the administrator get your attention?
Yeah, I, on a weekly basis, probably have five or six different conversations with town administrators, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The committee probably wouldn't meet for a month, and he's not going to sit out to wait for a month for satisfaction.
Sure.
But if he realizes that, you know, it's not getting done, he's going to need to talk to somebody.
Right, right.
He shouldn't wait for a board to meet, he should be able to go to maybe our administrator to make.
Oh, sure, sure.
And that's very common too. And on every bill, there's a name and phone number of the Mass Department of Telecommunications, and they handle complaints as well.
George?
I had a visitor a while back. I live about 350, 400 feet off the road. So, that's a good loss in coaxing cable. And I had to say, you guys went the extra mile to get me back to service. A month later, it came out again, couldn't burn it again, and they came out with better coax, and I haven't had a box since, and I don't have any complaints. Like I said, I live 300, 400 feet off the road, and the losses on the coax cable were, you know, quite heavy. And they did a heck of a job, and I'm very happy.
Okay, thank you.
Who else?
Ms. Alderman?
How would the transition over to her email, because I currently have a Charter email account, and I assume that does not contribute.
Right. So, this is a question that's come up a couple of different places. We are going to be communicating with all the customers and giving a tremendous amount of lead time as email addresses are transferred over, both to retain data, to make sure contacts know that there's a new email address. There isn't a hard and fast timeframe right now, you know, and certainly because the deal hasn't happened yet, but it's a question that comes up often, and it's something that we're aware of internally, making sure that everyone has a lot of time to be able to make whatever plans necessary for that transition.
I know in my past, in my working life, and when a company did a different email, they would take almost a year or at least six months where both email addresses worked. Is there something like that that happens, so that if people, you know, only email you once every six months, that they didn't get a new address?
Yeah, and I don't want to speak out of school because there isn't anything set in stone, but yeah, I think that's accurate in terms of the timeframe that we're looking at in terms of making that type of transition.
I have a question in regards to the contract that Charter has and you have with Comcast in regards to local stations like 2240, you know, Weather Station. I mean, in years past, you've seen that they've come to a bypass, where they couldn't come to terms, and we would lose them, or we would be threatened to lose them. Is there going to be any problems like that?
We haven't.
Because you don't, both have different contracts with them.
Right. Yep. We haven't had a blackout since I've been with the company, and I can't recall one. I mean, the big one that everyone remembers was CBS with Time Warner in New York a couple of years ago. I'm going to put it back on the map, but, you know, we've had timely. But, you know, we, we've had timely.
I, I think we had an issue with twenty-two and forty at one particular time. They were going to be off the air as far, they'd be on the regular. You know, you get them on a rainbow, a, a rabbit ear TV antennas, but you weren't going to get it on cable. But it was resolved and I'm just wondering, because there's two different contracts here for each one of them. Is there going to be an issue in the future?
Well, I think that there'll always be an issue with the broadcast stations. These, these are the, the so-called free over-the-air broadcast TV.
Correct.
Yet they, and we used to carry them for free. But probably five or six years ago, it shifted, so rather than getting a, a letter from the broadcast station exercising their must-carry rights telling us, you have to carry us, fine. We now get letters, you can't carry us unless you pay us a whole lot of money. So we have, we've never had a blackout with Charter, but as, we've had particular problems with Channel twenty-two out of Springfield and the owner of that broadcast network. It's kind of bringsmanship negotiations. And, and they keep putting these crawls across their station, you know, call Charter, blame Charter. It, it happens everywhere. But the, the fact is that that's what causes the increase in the cable rates and the broadcasters couldn't care less because we send the bill out. So there, there's always going to be issues like that and it will probably only get worse.
Issues that are, that face either one of the companies? Are there any pending issues like that coming about?
No, but, but the contracts are kind of on a rolling schedule, so, but, but nothing. And, and, you know, we know that our customers want to receive these broadcast stations.
Well, I mean, local people get the local news, emergency information and stuff like that, so it's something that I hate to see lost, that's all.
Are there any other questions or concerns? So you do need a motion for us to say anything? No, nothing, you need nothing from us.
No, because it's open for comments until September thirtieth. So if anybody in the public has any questions that they'd like to address to us, this will be open until September thirtieth?
Is that statute of some days?
I didn't see anything, is there anything missing?
No, I think the October fifteenth date is the, is the big one that the, the board would need to act.
So our next meeting would be October seventh and.
So that gives us time for the comments given to get on the next agenda?
Sure.
And if there are any further questions, happy to answer them, yeah, a- as they come up.
Very good.
I'm just curious, is there anything that you offer above and beyond that Charter did for customer service?
I, i- in terms of what, and, and only because I'm not that familiar with, with what Charter offers for, for customer service.
I mean, I, I don't know, just some other communication, some other, something else that you, what, how different? Why are you different than, than Charter?
I'm Charter.
Yeah. So, so in, in terms of customer service, I, so we, we have our service centers, the Westfield and, and Springfield. We have telephone customer service, we have online chat. We have, you know, depending on what the need is, we have technicians that'll come out to the home. We have self-install kits if, if residents want to install equipment themselves. There's a, a variety of ways in terms of bill pay, you know, again, electronic, telephone, in-person. We also offer bill pay at any Western Union location. So the big Y up the road, customers will be able to pay their bills there. You know, and, and I think that's, it, it spans a, a wide array and we're constantly looking for ways that are most convenient for people. Fifteen years ago, it didn't make much sense to have a focus on online bill pay because most people didn't pay their bills online fifteen years ago. Now it's, it's much different. I, I haven't paid Tom and his company i- in person or by mail for the last three years. It, it's, it's a nice, nice opportunity to have, so. And again, part of my role is if, for whatever reason, those standards aren't being met, you know, I, I'm here to, to both relay those concerns internally and talk through whatever the issues are with, with the town and with residents.
Okay, if there's no more questions or concerns, thank you gentlemen so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Can you leave it?
I don't know if Dan might want to.
Would you two miss it over here?
No. Thanks, thank you, thanks for coming. And leave us with the board, if you need additional copies, certainly, it's a pleasure. We used to be on that side, but some select going to love them, so.
Oh, are you?
Thank you so much.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Did you guys have a chance to look at those?
They're coming, I'll let you know.
Okay, so that's done, next we have open time for the public. Nobody? Anybody? Nothing? All right, let's move on. We have some minutes to approve, I don't see them in here though, Heather, are they in here?
Uh, yeah, you have to go back, but I have them right here or if you want to wait till next. So if you guys want to take a look at those, they're in your packets or they're right here. If you could look at those, we can prove them after.
Do we need Rich in here for the next one?
I will look at them. Do you want to do the payroll warrants?
Um, they're looking at them. Just for anybody out listening to this meeting that's wondering if the NFL red zone is going to be offered, it will be, so don't worry.
Just for your husband, wasn't it?
I don't know if he's home from soccer yet, but it can't be said that I didn't mention it. I did ask the question.
My husband will appreciate that too. See how a Patriots' van you play in my car? Is there going to be anything about that?
Okay, so why don't we skip? Your goals will probably take more than a couple of minutes, so, and you're looking at the payroll warrants. So let's skip down to the PCF for Jennifer Day, do you have that, Heather? Uh, we have a PCF for the Assistant Treasurer Collector. This is a promotion combined with a position and pay change. This is a revision to a current position's job duties along with an increase in pay to reflect the additional job responsibilities. It's not a new position and does not need to be reposted per legal counsel. So I would accept the motion after you've reviewed the paperwork to sign the PCF.
The policy procedures have no questions?
No questions.
About fines?
Not that I'm aware of.
I have a question, did the PPP, PQB go through it and re-graded to come up with a new amount? Who came up with the new amount?
All the paperwork's attached.
I don't think it was rescored.
So who came up with that amount?
I was going to tell it to Donna.
Am I wrong, Heather?
I, I don't know the exact thing, I'd have to look at it, but I believe the PPP did look at it.
I know he looked at it.
What's the, what's the old rate, what's the new rate, maybe I'm just.
Well, there was two, it's just an addition of job responsibility, so you can't.
Well, when you, when you upgrade, you, you give a stipend depending on how much, what the additional duties are in general.
It should say old rate, new rate on the form.
It just says new hourly rate.
What's, what's the new hourly rate?
We have an old hourly rate.
You still in the community?
Jennifer Day says rate right here.
I don't know, the payroll's down there, so I guess I could look at it.
Well, it says her rate is fifteen oh three. I mean, we, we have a.
The old rate is fifteen oh three?
Well, it just says rate. And, and I'm not saying it's, it's a high, high rate, low rate, it's just that we have a process, I want to make sure it went through the process. Because some, a department head, I don't think, should just say, let's take it from fifteen to nineteen. I mean, because otherwise all department heads will start doing that.
So the email that, the correspondence that went to town council, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, was not around rescoring, or it was?
Uh, it was whatever the PPP needs to do, if they need to rescore, they need to rescore. But it had more to do with the fact that the position was not a new position, did not need to be reposted.
Didn't have to be reposted, but somebody needs to figure out a grade.
Maybe a little bit later I can make that, the call to the chair of the PPP.
Is that rate within the structure of that job?
That's what the PQB would have to.
So why don't we put it aside and see if we can find an answer?
It looks like it went from fifteen oh three to sixteen dollars.
And ninety-seven cents.
What?
So ninety-seven cent increase.
Oh, yes. Yeah. I'm not saying that's good or bad, but I just want to make sure we don't open the door for some other department to come in and say, well, they did it, why can't we?
Okay, so you want to, because I took it out of here, you want to keep them together?
Oh, there's Donna.
Oh. Do you know if the, the increase for Jennifer Day, if that, if the position was rescored, where did the increase amount come from, how was that derived? Like who decided from fifteen oh three to sixteen?
I did.
You did, but it wasn't rescored by PQB or anything like that?
No, I mean, they, they, I gave them everything, but they didn't actually rescore it.
Did they say they didn't need to score it, or they?
I didn't say anything about needing to score it.
Is that, is that sixteen dollars in the same grade as the other one? Pay grade?
They were both graded, both positions were graded at an eight previously.
And they're still on an eight?
They're still at, as far as I know, I mean, the other.
Is that sixteen dollars within the grade eight range, I guess?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because Annie was making way more than that, because she left because of the time she was here.
So that was the number you came up with based on the additional duties?
Right. And, and taking it off of the starting salary of the other position. The whole reason I did this was to try and even out the duties and the hours because the way it was, because they each had their own separate job duties, even though they both weighed on customers and stuff, the workload is much heavier on one side than it was on the other. And so hopefully by doing this and having the third person do what needs to be done, it will even out the workload and workload.
I don't, I don't think we disagree with anything, we're just wondering how we came up with it.
Possible procedures were fine with it and the finance committee was fine with it.
Well, I mean, PPP saw it three times so far, so.
It's within the same grade range, which is important, we're just concerned that if somebody else says they did it, can we do it? That's all, so, yeah, okay now.
So I would accept a motion to sign the PCF for Jennifer Day.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
What's the date today?
Twenty-third.
Okay, so let's move back up. Hi, Rich, how are you?
Hi, Richard.
Um, so we have virtual exec here, at our last meeting, we voted to have Rich come back to help us in the interim until such, until such, wow, such time. We finalized things with the building commissioner position and at the last meeting, it was voted that Rich would provide inspection as needed and be available for Tuesday office hours, which I, was what I thought we had left with all that understanding. Rich has some concerns that he would like to discuss with the board, so.
I was told that I had to come in two hours every Tuesday night and that was it, and do inspections. And I think that was right, because the PD department here could be running two hours a week.
So just let me, for the, just so I'm clear about how things have transpired. When we left at our last meeting, it was office hours every Tuesday night and on an as-needed basis as the interim building inspector for a set rate, and that was it. Upon coming into the office after that meeting and finding that probably things have not been kept up with over the time that, since you've left, there's probably a little more work involved.
So we've got twenty-five houses to be filled by.
I, right.
Every house has to have five inspections. There's a hundred and twenty-five inspections, there's that new level, so the rest of your stuff going on.
So the amount of work was not, the amount of work that has to be done was not being kept up on with just an interim building inspector, is that true?
No, whatever, I can be done two hours a week. You know, the paperwork and looking for people working out for minutes and everything else.
Right. And so now the board is tasked with how do you want to handle that? Do you want to keep, to keep the situation the way that it is and have office hours every two weeks, every other week and as needed until Rich reaches the amount of money that he's allowed to make per the retirement board? Or do you want to increase the amount of time that Rich works in order to keep up with and catch up on paperwork in the past?
Well, I know that was an issue the day after we met people. And Heather was under the impression, two hours and thirty-five dollars in inspection, correct? Per inspection, that's three inspections on average to a house, right?
Five.
Five, okay. So with that being said, you felt that in order to do the job properly, you need some more office time? And I said, you need to stop right now, would you continue doing it for two hours a week until we meet next, which was tonight, that we would try to resolve this? Because we wouldn't have had a building inspector at the time, because there were disagreements. So Rich agreed with me that he would, I told, talked to Liz and we put it on the agenda. Now, I talked to Rich back and forth and, you know, he was talking anywhere from ten to twelve hours a week on average. Now, if there is a change from that, let me know, but that's, you know, what we talked about. But I just want to make sure that, you know, what we have on average is, is we have enough to cover it. Number one, and number two, this will improve the situation we have right now until we remedy the situation for the permit board. So if I have anything different than what you, we said.
No, like you say, you know, I called him last week for, for Rick, the house. The police called me up, who, who are you going to call? We said, go on, we, September ninth, they'll get these things. But they're calling.
Well, you should be compensated for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm worried for a buck. Now, these are things, I called the other morning because seeing that the problem was full, I had to open the office up. You can't say, do this two hours a week, you have to have a two-hour week job? Nobody promises, nobody wants to be promised two hours a week.
See, when we said as needed, I, I was thinking.
You figure twenty-six weeks.
Well, no, when we said as needed, I thought we were saying, as you thought time was needed, you'd come in and do it, not. I don't know what as needed meant to everybody else.
Well, I kind of, I was, I knew you were going to come in on Tuesday, that was what we wanted. And I, I, I didn't know if the thirty-five dollars covered and had him coming in and back and forth, but we did have this conversation as needed.
Yeah.
We put time in.
So I, I, I wasn't thinking of restricting you to a couple of hours a week by any means. Yeah, so that was probably just a misunderstanding. So you're saying ten, twelve hours a week is good, or around there? Yeah, I'm okay with that. Again, we have to watch out how much money we take.
The way, the way in.
Entirely.
Covered for the time being?
Hundred and sixty?
Nine fifty.
Oh, okay, so.
But can I keep an eye on?
Almost a half FTE, okay, I'm, I'm fine.
Well, you know, you're, you're on your best, you know, if you don't need it some weeks, fine. If you need more, another week, hopefully it averages out, but we do want to take care of these people.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, very much.
Okay. Heather, can I keep going, do you want me to stop and do your balls?
Uh, no, but Vicky's here, so it's a long one.
That's why I was asking.
You can skip me. Randall's on his way in. Whatever you need to do is fine, I'm here for.
You're here for the rest of the night? All right, so let's talk about the credit card policy.
Oh, let me, can we do the Norris School piece and I'll call down in for the credit card?
Okay, so the Norris School piece, which number is that?
Five point five.
Five line.
Is this the, the last one?
This is the.
Five point one?
Five point five, five one, right?
Five point five. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, let's talk about the Norris School roof, Vicky, ready to step on?
I have final paperwork in order for you guys to sign. I don't have it all because I'm waiting for one piece of paper from, what's his name here? Um, Tishman is supposed to be giving a hold of the commissioning consultant, if he needs to sign this.
Tishman.
Chris.
There was a question that I have before we sign off on the final payment, and Heather had called me at one point during a heavy storm. They had some leak issues over there.
Uh huh.
And Heather asked me to go take care of it, and I says, well, Heather, we have a, an architect that's responsible for that, and they need to be called in, because they're responsible to the contractors, okay, and I believe you did that.
I believe we did, I believe the end result was that they determined it had nothing to do with their work, but it was some pre-existing work from the structure.
My concern is, is that being remedied, or how's it, you know? Because we sitting on our last payment, we have no leverage.
It's already done.
Oh, it's all done?
It's already done, because um, I believe we had a conversation, you came up, I talked to the superintendent, you talked to the building room, um, maintenance guy, and they were all set with those two spots.
Okay.
And they were okay with that.
They're fixed.
They're fixed, those pieces, they were, the superintendent was happy with whichever, I talked to Clay Samson quite a bit, who took over for Mark.
Mark, yeah.
Yes. Um, and that last payment is in, but they cannot release it until we send in all these other final payworks. Um, so I have some audit closed up material that I need you guys to sign, as well as the superintendent and the school committee, which I've already been in touch with them. But I'm waiting for one piece from the commissioning consultant that needs to sign off first. So I have another piece of paperwork for you to sign, this one I'll bring to you to sign, and then once the MSBA gets all this paperwork, they will send a final audit report that we will then review, we'll sign off on that audit report, and then they will release that final payment to us.
Have we been getting any of the fifty five percent reimbursement?
That's what you stopped.
That's what I'm talking about, we originally got one payment of five hundred seventy six thousand, six hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. We're only owe forty seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars left, because there's only one point one three five, five hundred twenty nine thousand dollars or so, that was eligible to be reimbursed, even though we paid more, even though we paid more for that roof, that piece was only eligible for that fifty five percent, so our reimbursement is six hundred twenty four thousand, nine hundred eighty one dollars. So, um, I just, you just sign one piece and I will be back to have the rest.
And you dragged us off that, Ferguson, with all this?
He, he was with the thought that he kinda just, really didn't get too much involved as long as you were getting the reimbursement.
Right, I just, I just want to make sure there's no other outstanding issues over there.
No, I made sure of that before I sent that final retainage and that final um, money for that last, I think it was eight thousand dollars.
Now, there um, there's no outstanding um, change orders or anything?
No, there was one eight thousand dollar change order that also was included in that seventy eight thousand dollar payment that we made, the last payment that we made, which I submitted to the MSBA, but only forty seven of that is reimbursable because of the total dollar amount that's been reimbursed so far, so.
That was a big question you had too, about change orders getting reimbursement.
Right, and they don't give reimburse. So, um.
For those for us to sign tonight?
Yes, and you have one for you to sign tonight, because I have it ready, and but the other one I don't.
Do you need a motion for us to sign those, or can we just sign them?
It just says chief executive officer, and when I spoke to Sarah on the phone, I suggested you sign it, because you're the chairman, but she said I could sign it if I wanted, and I said, well, to be consistent, the chairman's been signing all the papers.
About to sign?
Yeah, I think that's probably what I do. So we need a motion to sign.
The final reimbursement.
Final reimbursement papers.
For the Norris School.
For the Norris School.
Second.
There's no, that's just, there's not a total amount there, that's just um,
Request, request. Certificate, certificate for reimbursement.
Yeah.
So we're requesting the certificate.
Please, please.
Basically what it's saying is that you're you're certifying that this has been, the project has been complete. And once we send this in, they'll give us an audit report, which we'll also have to review and sign off.
Begin the final.
And then, then they'll send that final payment to us, so.
So there's a motion, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow, that's great that that's finally done.
Do we fill in all this stuff underneath too?
Uh, a bare piece, yeah, that will be more helpful.
While I'm doing this, the next part is the. Sure.
I would just like to say, I'd like to thank Ed for all the effort and everything he did on that project. It was a long project, I was, I was there in the beginning, and I know how much work it was, and he was over there, even above and beyond, and I just appreciate it, thank you.
Um, the next part is the final note to borrow on the Norris School roof, Donna.
So, what was the exact amount that we, that we were responsible for?
Five hundred twenty seven thousand, three hundred two dollars. So. No, they round everything to zeros, and sixty five cents, that we would have to borrow, but they rounded it, and it's.
Round it up?
So, um, we had already budgeted for fiscal fifteen, which is the fiscal year right now, um, to pay now a hundred twenty five thousand principal, and we had budgeted for interest as well. Um, so that, so we're basically taking that off of what we're now going into permanent financing for. So the next payment will be due October first of two thousand sixteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Which is, will be the next fiscal year sixteen.
Is this a twenty year note?
No, it's a three year note.
Oh, good.
So the amount that we're paying, uh, that we were, it, we're raising to pay our debt on the Norris School, which was a debt exclusion, so it was over and above the regular tax levy. We were paying a hundred twenty five thousand, so that's why we budgeted a hundred twenty five, to try and, we paid the Norris School off last fiscal year, to try and keep it level, so that we're not seeing like a big drop and then it goes up again, right? So, the principal payment for the next three years is one thirty seven thousand, one thirty four thousand, one thirty five thousand. Um, so the the interest, you know, varies slightly because, well, because you have a less, every year it goes down, so. The interest rate we got is point nine two from People's Bank, which is awesome. Um, I mean, I was hoping for less than one point five, but point nine two for three years, for three years now is great. So, uh, the total amount of paying interest is just under seventy five thousand dollars.
Over the three years?
Over the three years. Um, so this way, even though the principal payment is slightly more than the one twenty five, um, it's gonna make less than a penny difference on the tax rate. Less than a penny than than versus the one hundred and twenty five thousand. So, it just made sense to, why carry it for another year and have a smaller payment? Because in a few years, we might be looking at a um, public safety complex, you know, so the, and this might be paid off, and you know, this would be paid off before any permanent financing would be stopped, if a project like that were to happen. So at least, you know, we're trying to pay stuff off and low interest rate and just, you know.
That's great.
Get it done.
If if that debt went away, how much would it affect the tax rate, hold debt, well, at the end of three years, if, would, how much would the tax rate go down?
I don't know that answer, because I don't have to do it.
I would have to look at it.
Sure, somebody's gonna ask that, you know, but you're right, we should use it for another project if possible.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be a debt exclusion, obviously, but um, just to try and keep it at level, that's, it's the smartest way to do it, when you have stuff like that, so.
But we don't have a lot of debt overall, do we?
No, I mean, this part, we have this building, you know, which wasn't all right. We're paying up a fire, over something like that too, I think, for a few mortars and, and not, nothing as big as.
Yeah, I remember the auditor saying, we don't carry, we're not carrying a lot of debt, which is good.
Yeah, most of it's fairly, and then of course, all the water type stuff, you know, but that's comes out at a price bond, and.
Yeah.
There's a zero.
Combi tanker and communications.
Oh, yeah, communications, I think might be paying.
Was down in.
Yeah.
By fourteen, it's down in fourteen.
Yeah. So.
Do you need a vote from us to sign that?
Um, yes.
So I would accept a motion to sign the final note on the borrowing of the Norris School roof.
So.
You know, the total principal is four hundred and six thousand.
He did it, he did it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to get the sign off, but, so. You can just sign at the top line.
You all have a sign in?
Yes. No.
This also.
Three.
Just one of these five lines.
That's one last time.
Yes, we're gonna have to get into this.
Get another one now?
All of them are the same.
Oh, you got three different.
Hey, when I negotiate my mortgage, you wanna come with me?
Yeah, right.
Is that three copies here?
Yep. Yeah, we're pretty good.
No one's done?
Why?
Sign these two?
Yep.
Wait till December, we have to sign our licenses.
I just want to get back to the agenda.
I'm just waiting till they get to the last paper and then I'll keep going. I don't want, I don't want to miss the whole floor, is that right? Okay.
No, you know, at Christmas time, you do the liquor license.
That's the last one?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Hit back and then forward, I don't really know, it just happens, it's magic. Um, okay, so then we're gonna move to the application for Mr. Henry Kozak at seventy four, seventy four Russellville Road, uh, for special permit keeping, for the keeping of more than one unregistered vehicle on the premises in accordance with the bylaws, Article ten. After posting this item on the agenda, Heather has determined that we have more formal special permit process on the books, and we will revisit this issue upon completion of those steps, so.
Can we explain what the steps are?
Can you explain what those steps are, Heather?
I can give you a brief summary, but essentially it's an extensive um, flow chart that we found, uh, and confirmed with Ed to.
High level, it's kind of the high level.
Uh, basically what happens is with special permits in general, keep in mind that the Board of Selectment doesn't do these often, so we don't have this readily available at our fingertips many days. Um, we send a notice to all the relevant boards, committees, and commissions, they have thirty five days to respond. Upon thirty five days expiring, if they haven't responded, we assume that the answer is they have no objections. At that point, you then post it as a public hearing, uh, then you have to wait a period of time for anyone to object, and then you move forward from there, but it requires some postings with the town clerk and to move forward from there. Originally, the application should have been with town clerk, but when we checked in with the town clerk initially, before even having to go forward to the special permit, they didn't have an application that was relevant. So, we were starting from scratch on this one, to the best of our knowledge, and we're working for it, but we have worked with the owner of the property, he's aware of this. We're in, have no intention of imposing any fines in the meantime, because that was one of the requirements, either apply for the special permit or we'll be fining you for non-appliance, since he's complied with the ability with actually um, applying for the special permit, now it's just on us to figure out how long and how to go about getting him that.
Sounds like Thanksgiving anyways.
Well, I won't tell you the date, it says at the bottom of the special permit form, but it could be a while.
Any questions on that one?
No, thank you.
Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes, so I can check those off my agenda?
Yep.
So we have minutes from August twenty sixth and September ninth. Does anyone have any objections to the minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty sixth and September ninth?
I'll make a motion. Except both of them?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was signed by um, select board member Martin, since he, oh, you gotta sign in the back.
Back?
Yep. Then, she, on the very back, moved by. We have payroll warrants, and I just want to get them off the desk. So we have payroll warrant fifteen dash thirteen, the amount of two hundred thirty thousand, four hundred thirty seven dollars and thirty eight cents.
So move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heather?
Aye.
At a test or adjourn?
At test.
Jackie, sign this top page. We have the bill warrant.
What is the number on it, fifteen twelve?
Yeah.
Bill warrant fifteen twelve, and the amount of one hundred twenty seven thousand, two hundred fifty seven dollars and forty one cents. Is there a motion to sign?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not missing anything, right? So there's two papers that's not to be signed, is it?
I don't have to sign, so.
Do we?
No, you don't have to sign the minutes, it's just me as a court, that's what I usually do. I should remember that from last year.
This, you can sign.
You don't need to.
That's what you're not holding, not taking that.
Oh, this one, okay.
And then you need to sign that.
Who needs to sign that?
Huh?
Ed needs to sign it.
You can sign on the second page. Okay. Not missing anything, that's it? Okay. Let's. Alright.
Donna just came on me again.
Heather, where do you want to do it?
I sign the top page.
Okay, so.
Then the top page, you have exclusion from all the, all the others, so we now have to split it into the four, or is that different?
One, two?
Yep. Okay, so the next thing is um, credit card policy for town departments. Um, we have Vicky and Donna, we received another request from a department head to take out credit cards. There's a great concern for our financial department on this matter, so I think it's a conversation that we need to have. I will open the floor.
Do we have credit cards now?
We do.
Who has them?
Who has credit cards?
Kind of limits and all that?
I have no idea.
We don't know who has credit cards?
I know who has two credit cards.
How many credit cards are for the town?
I have no idea. The town is a whole like, the landlord office, like, the town does not have any.
Does not have any credit cards. I know two that the police department had. One that came up, which brought this to a bigger head, because I received a bill, a statement, didn't know what it was for, it was a, it was a credit card statement, and I was gonna pay it, I didn't know what it was for, I didn't know why we had it.
Whose name is the credit card in?
Something from police department, I'm assuming, because that's where the bill came to.
And how do, how do they pay that bill in the past? So.
This is brand new, this is brand new, that's why it kinda came up, and I was like, I have no idea what this is. It came in for payment, it was for gasoline, I'm assuming it was for Gulf, because it had a little Gulf sign in the corner, but the credit card name was WEX. They know what WEX was, they know what it was for.
WEX?
Yeah, that's the company that does, must do credit cards for, for fuel.
Yeah.
Because I looked it up on the, to figure out what it was for.
We have one, uh, where.
So, I'm assuming that the police department opened it up, and they were to charge gasoline, because our fuel tanks are, are not working correctly. But the point is, I don't know about it, I don't know what it's for, I don't know how much the limit is, I don't know what the, the, the due dates are. I don't know anything, which I would assume that if you're gonna have, first of all, I don't believe you should have any credit cards, secondly, if you do, shouldn't somebody else know, like, if we're supposed to be responsible for keeping the thing? Like, if we're supposed to be responsible for keeping the things, the books.
They must have used the town's tax ID number to open it.
Right.
Yeah, and that, that's the issue, I guess I have, because-
And so, just like bank accounts, I mean, I'm supposed to, you know, like I have to check periodically with all banks in the area to make sure that no other department or person has opened an account that I'm not aware of.
And somebody had to personally sign that to get that credit ready.
Now, recently, the, um, Conservation Commission was looking to prevent the chairman from using his own credit card. So my office opened a Staples credit card for the Conservation Commission. We had all the information in our office. Because if something happens and we needed to call that company to get information, whether it be, um, reports, invoices, statements, whatever, I can't get at those if I'm not on that particular instance. We opened up a Staples credit card specifically for the, um, Conservation Commission, and it was a mess. It just didn't work. Um, so that was something that I, you know, we said, you know, we're not gonna do that again, cause it just, if I don't know that they're out there, then I can't keep control of that stuff.
It's really hard too, with the way our billing cycle is, it's only every other week, and if a statement comes in right after we've had a vendor warrant and they might not get the payment before the payment is due, and so then interest charges, so how do you pay insurance?
Then you deal with penalties too.
Huh?
You deal with penalties.
Correct, right?
I mean, we, where, where I work, we have a ProCard, procurement card, and it's run out of my office, and we have over two thousand cards. But there are strict guidelines and regulations, you have to sign for it, the supervisor has to sign up. It goes through a process and it's reviewed on a regular basis for fraud, because, you know, those things are fraught with fraud, if I can say it that way. So we have a very tight program that gets audited on a regular basis, so people shouldn't just be going out there getting credit cards without going through a process. That said, we don't have a process, so we need to figure one out.
What is the position of the Board of Selectmen based, you know, on, on credit cards and having them? And if you want them, who can have them, how do you get them, and what do you wanna do with them, or do you wanna say the town doesn't need credit cards?
I, I think my opinion, again, since, since I'm, we run the program through my office at work. I mean, I think there's maybe a need for it, either not now or in the future, so I think we should have a process in place. And I'd be happy to share our application, for instance, and then maybe have town administrator be the person that if somebody needs a credit card, they vet it through her and discuss with her, then it comes through the board for final approval, if and when that, you know.
I mean, I, um, that, the other party's not here, so I, I feel we're at a disadvantage making this decision. We need to know why this is a credit card needed, and I don't have a problem. And I think, um, maybe we, uh, should have a dialogue, but I think the dialogue doesn't have to be through the board, it should be through the administrator, with the department heads, looking at procedures. But I know in past, we had issues with credit cards, that we paid money for items that were not-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and, um, we'll get into names, but, you know, um, we ended up paying for those, okay? And then, um, I, I know the police department, there's an issue with fuel and, and stuff like that. You can't run it down all the time and just say, put it on the account. I don't, I don't know how, how it's going, but we need to have a discussion, seeing what his needs are. And he might have a legitimate needs, I don't know, but on the other hand too, is I know, um, in years past, the chief has gone to conferences out of, out of, out of state and he, I think he, he has an American Express card he, he could use for those conferences.
I'm not saying that.
No, but I'm just saying that, it is two parts to the story here, we need, if, if it's legitimate and there, there's a need that's justified, we have an administrator who can decide that need, and we need to develop policy that the department head needs a credit card and the auditor, and the account needs to get access to that credit card to get information, she should be one of the people on that, uh, credit card to get the information.
Let me throw something, because, you know, doing post audit, I think it's critical on these, whoever has it and whoever needs them is fine. But we have the, the, the cardholders, but we also have what we call records managers, and that person's responsible for doing a monthly audit of all the charges. And the person that holds the card has to give the receipts to this person, they reconcile it and, and they do a post audit of it. So whatever that person buys, it's gotta have a good reason, a business reason, and that records manager, I mean, Vicky would, in our case, would be the perfect records manager that everybody, or, or Heather, uh-
But, you know, credit cards, I'm just, I, they're not thirty days anymore, what are they, fifteen?
Oh, no, they're thirty days. You can pick the day of the month that you want.
Yeah, but by the time you get-
You get the bill in.
Thirty days, but you don't get, you don't get the bill in the next thirty days to pay it.
If you do it electronically, you do.
No, there have been times, because there's also a Bank of America card that the police department has that. You know, he said to me, if I get this on a Friday and bills are due and we would submit it to you third, on Tuesday, could I bring it to you Monday if it's due and you need to pay right away, because it would miss the billing cycle?
It would never be due that quick.
And I said, that's fine, you can bring it to me on Monday, but what if he wasn't there Friday, he didn't get the mail, and it was late, and then he did the bill, I mean, there's always-
When do you, when do you ever get a bill that you, that is due within five days?
Too, when it's due on Sunday or something, then.
But I mean, you always have a, a, a period of time, you never get the bill on Friday.
You don't get a bill on Friday that's due on Tuesday.
Tuesday, no.
No, but it would miss the next billing cycle, if we didn't pay it for that Tuesday, the next two weeks, it would be too late.
We pay bills every two weeks?
We pay every two weeks.
So you turn them in almost three weeks, you know, a week before the check goes out, you turn your bills in to the town's office.
Okay, so what, so we need to come up with a, a credit card policy, somebody needs to have a conversation with the police chief.
I, I, I think-
And it only brought it to a head because of that one instance where I got a statement and I didn't know what it was for, I had no receipts. I didn't know if it was a credit card, what it was.
I don't like to see a lot of credit cards out there, because it gives people a false impression, uh, how to spend money. Uh, and the biggest thing is, you can't pay off a statement, you have to pay off the slip.
I have to pay off, or anyway, I have to have receipts.
So those slips have to be collected and brought in and put as part of the statement.
With, with the back of proceeds?
Correct.
Uh, yes.
So, I mean, I'm not opposed to-
Yeah, eventually, they were back in the office, but-
Finding a solution, I'm not opposed to finding a solution.
Correct.
But the solution's gonna, it's gotta be warranted that we're doing this. I just don't wanna see a lot of credit cards around. I think the fewer, the better, and if, you know, my own feeling are, I know certain people, uh, might need to have a credit card, because we don't have petty cash for department heads to play with, and nor would I wanna see that either. But there's instances where, case in point, um, if they go to certain stores, they have to have a certain credit card to pick it up.
Now, you know, we did run into a big issue with the previous fire chief.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
See, I opened up a ton of credit cards, we couldn't get at them, we didn't know how to do what we needed to do with them. This was before my time, this is only going through what Joyce had to experience when she was trying to pay them off and figure out what was going on.
But he opened up in the town's name?
Yep.
I mean, how can he sign, or anybody sign, for the town when they don't have the authority?
So, can I recommend coming up, can somebody, we need to take the best parts of the pieces that we have there and put together a policy for the board to look at and to go for, we can talk about it all day, but until we have something to our head, it's stone.
I would also recommend that the departments look at that and they agree to that. There's no sense, we approve something and they're gonna be all upset about it.
So, when's your next department meeting?
Have that discussion before us.
Next department head meeting's the first, or the, what is it, the second, it's next Thursday, whatever the date is.
So, is this something that you can discuss and get input from and?
We, we can, but just so folks at home know as well, when this issue came up, what we did was we actually requested information from all other towns and communities around, we used one of the listservs, and we even contacted DLS to see what their official stance on this was. D, DLS is Divisional Local Services, they're a division of the Department of Revenue. So we work very closely with them in many of our projects and anything finance related. And when we worked with them and talked to them, you know, generally, they don't have an official, official policy right now, but generally, their answer is, don't do it. The theme from all the communities who did respond was, don't do it. Um, those who did do it, they say we have very, very strict policies and guidelines on it. Some of them do have P cards. Those who responded who had P cards had actually, P cards are the purchasing card. Um, they actually had really, really stringent requirements to use the P card. You only use it in utmost circumstances where there's absolutely no other way to pay for something.
Which is what you are.
You can't, you can't pay check, you can't, you know, wait to pay, you have to pay it right now, there was like four incident, instances listed out, and they required preapproval. It wasn't something, you know, Donna just felt like using the P card today because it was easier. You can't skirt around the purchase order issue. So if the item's over five hundred bucks, you still have to get a purchase order previous to using your credit card. You can't use the credit card to get around the purchase order issue. Um, so those are, those are some things, and one of the other things that was themed is those communities that did have purcha-, did have credit cards, one of two things happened, either the credit card was held in the Board of Selectmen's office essentially under lock and key, or any credit card that was needed was taken out through the accountant's office. So that it was as strict, as Vicky said, you know, someone knew exactly where the paperwork was, they understood what the terms were, what was happening, and they could follow up. So they knew it's September fifteenth, and they know the bill comes September twelfth, we don't have the bill, we're calling, cause we're not getting a late fee for this. But if they didn't take, we didn't take it out as a town, we don't know about it, you know, it would be like, um, John taking out a credit card in the town's name, we don't know anything about it, all of a sudden, we get the, the credit card billed today, but it's due next week, because that's, you know, just happened to be when he could bring it over, and now we're in trouble because we have date problems and-
And if you have no money in your budget, you gotta go to finance to get a transfer, and that takes you the month.
Yeah.
It doesn't prevent you from paying the bill, you, you still have to have money in your account, if you don't, well, then you're-
I, 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 I understand what everybody's saying here, but I, I do think there, um, you need to have this conversation with the parties that are involved to find out, you know, maybe they, you know, maybe there is a reason, and it can be justified. And maybe, you know, um, department head shouldn't be allowed to just take it out without the authorization of, uh, two signatures on it, maybe the accountant's office and the, uh, uh, department head, so you can get your paperwork in a, in a fashion where you can call somebody and look for those copies, if you need to. But, I mean, a conversation has to come on with people that currently have them, and right now, you're saying, so the chief that hasn't-
That's all I know of, are those two, I don't know if-
So the second one was who again?
Bank of America.
Two, for the police department.
Yes.
Okay, both of the police department.
There's a tractor supply account that is in various departments' names that I believe.
We have, we have one over there. You still use it?
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's not a credit card, I mean, I guess this is a Gulf Charge credit card and Bank of America for whatever, but the tractor supply is kind of, I mean, but too, you know, I'm with you.
So can we set up a meeting with the police chief and myself and?
Anybody who's got credit cards.
Anybody who has credit cards, and Heather.
Can we kind of explore, ask people if they got credit cards in town?
Let's figure out how many credit cards are, and then let's schedule a meeting. I get out work at two o'clock, need to pick up a baby at three fifteen.
And also, we need to know what kind of limits are on these credit cards.
Yep.
So let's get some of that going.
Those are good points.
Randall?
Yeah, we have a tractor supply card, but it's more of an account, you don't even have to pay the card, you just charge it on the account like any-
Can you come to the meeting?
It's like a store thing.
And you bring the bill into Vicky and she submit it regular?
Yeah.
Just a house charge account?
Yeah.
That makes more sense.
And that's what I think the police used to do with, for some reason, they don't use the gas the way the highway does here, the gas station in town. But they went to make a service, and he did the same kinda thing, but I don't know, maybe they don't wanna do that anymore, or I don't know what.
I don't think we're saying that they should or shouldn't have, it's just that we need a policy and procedure and a, a check, because somebody-
Right, limit, what's around the pump? Is there a clip around the gas pump?
Yeah, there's a tank that was, it's leaking, and you can't use it anymore.
Oh.
Came in the, um, measuring, uh, in the interstitial device between the two oil tanks. So, I can't use those tanks, one tank right now, right? You're using a diesel?
Uh-huh.
Correct.
Got that, got that. I'll give you my schedule, okay. Uh, we have a fiscal fourteen budget review. Vicky, you're on.
Uh, I guess basically, I just wanted to, um, kind of keep you up to speed, Maria. I'm figuring my balance sheets, the center DOR, um, I did a preliminary number crunch of free cash, and it doesn't look very pretty.
What's that number?
Um, it's gonna be between thirty-five and forty dollars. Depending on if the school is gonna reconcile some other accounts which are negative, um, they find other funding to, um, cover that, then you don't have to deduct that from our free cash, even though it's not in the general fund. Things like, um, revolving funds, if they're negative, we have to absorb in free cash. Any school funds that are negative, we have to absorb in free cash. Any capital projects, if they're negative, have to get absorbed in free cash. So any of those little items that are hanging out there, um-
Do you have a total number for those things right now?
Um, right now, if I were to keep the school just like it is, it's ten thousand, ninety-six dollars, make sense? And then the police detail is negative by thousand, one hundred eighty dollars, which, you talk to the DOR, most communities have a deficit in their, in their police detail, because you pay upfront before you actually receive the money, and by federal standard labor laws, we have to pay upfront. Um, so I went over it with Donna to make sure there wasn't any, like, larger receivables that we could have collected, and basically it was for, most of it is for the last two weeks of June where there was detail that was done, so there really wasn't, we weren't gonna get paid before June thirtieth anyway, but we still have to cover that cost.
So we'll get the money in, in?
We won't get that money back.
Won't we get the money?
We won't get it back in this, the year, year prior.
New fiscal year, we'll get it though.
We'll get it back.
Where's it go?
Just because it was done the last two weeks of June, we don't get it back?
We don't get that money back.
Why?
Pay out for that five thousand dollars.
For any of those other funds that are, that are underfunded, the free cash has to-
Cover it.
Cover it.
Oh, cover it, because it's the end of the year and it falls into the next year if it comes in.
No, it comes into the next year, it just covers the deficit, that's it, we don't get that money, we don't get that money back in free cash.
No, not free cash, it covers the deficit.
Covers the deficit, correct.
We don't lose the money. It comes in.
You do, you take it off the top, like if your free cash is a hundred grand, and you had school funds, revolving funds, special revenue funds that were negative, you have to take that off, say it was fifteen grand, you have to take that fifteen grand off a hundred, and you only get eighty-five thousand dollars.
Well, uh, uh, you got me confused here. So there's fifty-one hundred dollars left on the detail accounted in the year. We are still chasing that money somewhere, aren't we? Are we still billing for it?
Yeah, it's been bill for it.
Money is coming in.
It's been bill for it.
But that, we continue billing for it and assessing penalties.
Is there a receivable still, or is it?
It's a receivable, correct.
Okay, so we're going after it.
Yeah, 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 it is a receivable.
I, I just wanna make sure it wasn't written off.
No, it's not just writing it off, no, 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 it's just that, you can't, yeah.
Did we have any, uh, items that, um, we needed to borrow for that we didn't borrow for?
No, that would be the other option, is if you like, for, you know, the school roof last year, um, you know, we, we borrowed-
Chapter ninety money?
Chapter, um, chapter ninety money, um, we don't have to borrow as long as we get the money that we have applied for by September thirtieth between DOR. So we're good enough to worry about that. But we used to-
How about, how about the storm money?
We did borrow for that, yes, we do have to borrow for that.
Did you borrow, let me ask you this, did you borrow the fifty thousand that's supposed to come in from the federal highway administration?
Yes, it's still in that piece.
You know, you know, Randall had a storm in February, thirty-nine thousand.
We did get that money.
Okay, cool.
We did get that money. Now, what the DOR used to do, which they don't do anymore, is if you received any money that you were owed by September thirtieth, you could accrue that money and post it as being paid by June thirtieth, but the only money they let you do that with now is-
Money.
Chapter ninety money. So, but I just wanted to let you know that it's not gonna look, it's not gonna be pretty, I'm not finished, obviously, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that you're comfortable.
Hopefully it won't happen this year, if we keep control of the budget month to month. It seems like it's going well, at least through August, from what we've seen. I think the reports are accurate.
Yeah, I've been in grossing fourteen.
I've been looking at it today.
And fifteen, you know, I've been, I have pieces of what we've paid so far, but I haven't really looked at the full picture.
Joyce has been sending them, they're pretty much on target, but it's only two months, right?
Twenty halves. It'll be three.
All right, well, thanks for that bit.
You know what, if it comes in higher because of whatever I still have to reconcile with people, great, but I just, you know, it's not gonna be pretty, I don't wanna be totally shocked. So if it's fifty grand, you'll be psyched.
Yeah, yeah, I know. All right, thanks, Vicky.
Thanks, Vicky.
Thank you, sorry not for being this, but-
Uh, we're gonna move up to Mr. Barton this year, he would like to present a report from the Master Plan Imple- Implementation Committee. Hi, Mr. Barton.
There's not much news. The format is the same, it's a kind of summary, one page and about a page and a half, individual. At your leisure. In the detail reports, the summary reports, uh, report is brief. Essentially, boards and conditions continue to work. I think board is, I guess, spending almost all of its time on subdivision, as, as we know. I wanna call a retention, but I don't wanna take more time than is necessary to be observations at the bottom of the first page. I'm just repeating what you said before, one is obviously a barrier to leading projects, and there's not much you can do about that. I did send an email to Genovese at PPTC about grant opportunities, and I included the public safety center, the possibility of preserving the existing fire station and the old town hall, I thought maybe, uh, one of them might have been eligible for a CDPG grant, which PPTC has been having great success in getting for community and stuff, I didn't get very positive responses on that. The other, uh, the second item, shortage of volunteers, we all know, I know on the town website, uh, if you can catch it when it scrolls by and click on it, you get the list of vacancies, uh, and we thought about a couple of things, uh, one, putting a table out here during the election, I talked to Tom, Tom Furt about that, you know, handing out information about various boards and where there are vacancies, and she said something that made a similar inquiry for some board committee, she contacted the state, and the state said, not a good idea, go over to Camden Gardens if you let somebody in here, hour and a half during the election. Yeah, another thing we don't have was, uh, putting a one-page flyer listing of boards and conditions, and maybe what's the current vacancies, town census mail, which wouldn't cost me anything for this one page, and go in, center census. So I guess we're gonna be working.
If you send that page over to the school also, there's, if you send that one sheet page over to the school, they have Tiger Talk newsletter that goes out to the public, to all the kids in school, and so they're always looking for stuff to fill that, and it would be free because it goes out electronically. Um, it goes, it just went out, but as often as they get information, they try to send it out to families, and it goes electronically and won't cost a penny. So you could send that to Mickey in the office.
I guess we doesn't have a parent.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, good. Finally, I can't live up, which is, which we've had before, and we progress to VJ, which we had at our last meeting, usually does, is nothing, and what's going on on the website? It was embarrassing, I just hit that in. What I'm saying is, a whole computer operation is easier than, uh, at great extents, which the town doesn't have. So I'll answer questions.
I can get that paper over to her if you give it to me, I'll handle it, make up for my absence.
Hey Hank, on, uh, item three dash four C, uh, I don't see Mountain Road in here, but about nine, ten years ago, Mountain Road was officially accepted a scenic road at town meeting. Uh, scenic roads, accepted scenic roads. About nine, ten years ago, Mountain Road, dirt road, uh, that, uh, is up by the Hoyover border, has been accepted as a, uh, scenic road. It was done at town meeting, I don't see it.
That was when we did the joint deal with East Hampton or?
No, it was before that.
What's the spelling for that?
What's that?
What's the spelling for that?
Mountain Road?
Oh, it's Mountain Road.
Mountain Road.
Yeah, I think when we were doing the master plan and looking at scenic roads, there was some question asked, there seemed to be two, because I rather like, two sets of scenic roads approved under different kinds of legislation, and, uh, so there was a certain clarity about that.
This was done like in the last nine, ten years, it had to do with, there's, there's only like two houses on it, the Butters, uh, had an issue with all these heavy trucks going down there, brought to town meeting, and, um, they wanted to keep the scenicness of it intact. But it should be in the last nine, ten years in the records, that was.
Same, Mountain Road.
Mountain Road, it's a dirt road.
I'll pass that on to the.
I'm sure, uh, the clerk can get that for you, it was done at an annual town meeting.
Anything else? This one report, I would cover four months because we're trying to get it synced with fiscal years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Hank.
Okay, so, there's a few things left, and this is how it's gonna happen, first, there is, we're gonna talk about these minutes, and then we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we will finish the rest of the meeting. Need the warrant, that's what I'm talking about right now. Sorry, the warrant, um, the special town meeting is October twenty-first at seven o'clock at the Norris School Cafeteria, you want one for yourself though, I imagine.
I thought that was.
Here is a copy of the proposed articles. Uh, we need to decide if we want to keep all of them, add any of them, or take anything off, Heather can then run it through town council for review. The final version can be approved at a quick meeting prior to our public meeting of joint committees next Tuesday at six o'clock. Um, the public safety complex committee would like to say a few words on their articles, um, if you don't see anything on here that looks, uh, like it shouldn't be there, or something that you wanna add, we can, um, tell me the right word here, approve them.
So essentially, the board would need to vote tonight to sign next week. But essentially, you're approving them in substance.
Thank you, that's it.
Approve them in substance, and then we can sign them next week.
But first, Charlie, what would you like to say about your article?
Well, I haven't ever gotten all summer, so I'll give you a quick catch-up. Uh, we have a purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Gray, and I have property in the back, for a set that they should have left, we've met with the preservation, they've voted to allow us to transfer thirty thousand dollars to purchase the property, and then a four thousand for legal expenses, so that shouldn't impact the town budget. So those two articles are basically moved out, our agreement says that we'll make payments by the end of October, so if we do the town meeting at the twenty-first, we should be fine in that window and get that done. It's also gonna cause the download effect to happen, because once we record those deeds, we're taking all these other twelve deeds that we have here, combining them into one, we have the planning board, we have all the outside, uh, what do you call it, surveys done, so that the plot plan that's gonna be recorded is gonna have this as one continuous lot. There's no more county road, it'll be clean, done. So it's sort of like, it's taken us this long, but we're to the point now where we can have closure on that.
I didn't think it would come this soon.
I'm telling you.
Last time you spoke, it was like, wow.
Such a history lesson I got with this town is amazing. Right now, we're doing a review of the companies looking to do the feasibility study, we have ten applicants, we screened down, we're doing two reviews this week. Our hope is we go down to one, and then we go into contract negotiations. Would it be okay with the board, because we wanna get this on board, if the town administrator and highest chairman sign off on that contract once we get it tidied up, the money's already allocated, it's sitting there. And the contract's gonna be reviewed by our town attorney and approved, it's just a matter of just striking the pin, it's exactly what the dollar amount's gonna be.
What it's gonna be, I mean, is it a big variance, or is it within the range?
We haven't negotiated yet, but we can't go over the forty thousand that was allocated anyways.
Okay, so that would be the limit.
That would be the limit, it's not what we have.
If there's a limit, I'm okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a limit on there.
Are you gonna try to hold some back?
Yes, yeah, uh, and if that's okay with you, then we'll slip into the, the next part of this, just to give you something to think about. So how do you feel about the, the first thing with the contract?
I said it's fine.
I don't know if it's funny, I think, I'm not, you can negotiate it, but I think the board has to approve it.
But didn't we say forty was the limit already? And if we're agreed on that, and it comes in less than that, uh, I'm, that's why I'm okay, if there was no limit, I, I, I wouldn't make, because we know the limit. Depending on.
I'm just talking about legalness. Because one board member can't vote for her board, you know what I'm saying?
So you would prefer to see it come before us first?
Well, I think we, if, if, if we're gonna approve it, we can either vote now to give her the authorization to sign for us, or we need to vote it. But I don't think she can vote it out her own because of the power of the board.
I know, I agree, we'd have to give her the power.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, exactly.
Security authority to do it, you know, threshold's forty thousand anyways, the contract's already been done by the attorney, so it's all done. The idea is to keep it less than forty thousand, and go from there. So rather, what I'm trying to do with this is get this company on board as soon as we can, because there's a long process of putting this thing together. Our contract has drop dead date times throughout the contract, so we're prepared for December's town meeting presentation for getting the warrants together and all the rest of that. So I'm trying to just keep this moving, because you said, gee, I'm surprised you got the land thing cleaned up, it's, well, same thing.
Charlie, did we already have council review the contract? We did.
In fact, we gave the applicants a copy of the contract in the actual. Yeah, so they had everything upfront, we did everything upfront with everybody.
Well, I have no problem, uh, making a motion to give, uh, the chairman the ability to sign for the board.
Do you want the chairman and the town administrator, or just the chairman?
For the board, you're the only one.
I would say the chairman and.
Well, you're the only one that can sign for the board.
You would sign for the board.
You can put a different, you can put her title underneath her name, and she can sign, but you would sign as chairman of the board.
I gotcha.
But she's supposed to sign too, if I remember reading the contract.
That's fine.
Or should we make her responsible?
Okay, go ahead, sorry, keep going now. You can finish your motion.
I make a motion to, uh, chairman, sign off on the, uh, on negotiating contract for the, uh, public safety feasibility.
As long as it doesn't exceed the forty thousand.
As long as it doesn't exceed the forty thousand.
I second that.
All those in favor? Was there a part B?
Before Charles.
Part B was just a quick, just to hear what we're thinking. Can I just, uh, add to board?
Sure.
Good job. Took a long time.
Now, this is all the talk, right? This is, because Hank alluded to it, that's what's occurring now. There's a fire station right now. We got the weapons area in here, public safety complex, the building's up here, the thought was, and this is just a thought, we still gotta hire the company and everything else, was to remove this addition of the fire station, and that should give us an umbrella mass to put a separate driveway to the public safety complex.
And leave that other front building?
Remove this side. Okay, remember, the historical commission wants to save the old schoolhouse.
Which is the middle, sorry.
The old schoolhouse is the core of this building. Okay, and the interior walls still exist in that fire station. Take this off, and maybe this will give us enough for two-way traffic to route ten by the town hall. Off and back, you can pull out here and go down to him instead of being, uh, against the signage, because you'd have two ways.
Are you gonna have a setback problem with the, uh, weapons dingle?
The weapons dingle actually resides across the parking lot right now.
I understand what you're saying, but there's a setback to push that?
There's a setback issue up here, again, this hasn't been engineered, this is just a conversation between conservation, historical commission, and committee, trying to think of ways to do this, that we save the old schoolhouse, minimize the impact on the weapons, give a better driveway for the town hall.
We have a cost, I wonder what costs us?
This is all just talk.
I meant that, the, the schoolhouse itself, I mean, it's gonna be expensive.
Not unless you want a pile of bricks.
Can we use the old schoolhouse to build the new public safety complex?
Elevation's seeming to be wrong, anything else is way up high.
Um, is the feasibility study gonna cover what's gonna happen to the main fire, uh, building, once you take the wings off?
That's part of it, it's going to, part of the contract negotiation is not only the feasibility study of that, but salvage of the historical building. That's why I was curious, because Hank brought it up, I figured it better a little bit more as to what's being talked about, this doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
You can look at it.
Right, it could very well be, we take the side walls off, and the thing falls out. Then, there's another issue.
Yeah.
But we are going in the right direction.
But if you wanted to know, this is what I'm showing you.
Thank you.
You did fine.
Haven't done anything, and everything's been.
Well, you put something on a chalkboard, that's, that's the stuff.
It has a press, huh?
It is not possible. All right.
We're working towards it, that's, that's.
Go ahead.
Nothing to do with this.
Are, are you, any other questions on public safety council?
No, sir.
Then I have a mission, I have to get your board to help here to discuss one of the other articles.
Okay.
Give us, give us four minutes to get down to that article.
What's gonna take me that long to bring them down here?
All right, go ahead, John.
One of the articles here.
Thank you.
Can we start at the beginning, go over the articles, and I'm happy to add commentary as we go?
Well, I happen to be on article one, young lady.
Okay, awesome.
Where do you go?
This is an article, the only one I can see quickly, is, it's gonna impact the budget if it does.
Going to impact the budget.
You want me to talk about this one?
Well, I can talk about it too, I guess, doesn't matter.
So it says, by the receipts by the bus, is that?
So the bus, the transportation line item was, and you can stop me if I'm wrong at any point, but I've been to a lot of these meetings, so hopefully got it right. The transportation line item was cut from the budget last year, so the school needs to figure out how to cut forty-eight thousand dollars out of their transportation line. They cut one bus, which brought them down to twenty-five thousand dollars, they then implemented a transporta- a bus fee for anybody living within two miles of the school, and so, with a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cap, so you have to change the budget to reflect the money that comes in to pay for the buses. But that is paid for by the receipts brought in from the bus.
Yep.
It's already happened.
If we collect it.
It's already, money's already been collected, kids are riding a bus, fees are being collected.
You have to accept any money like that that's above and beyond, you're, you're gonna adjust the budget.
The money people have to buy bus passes, families needing to have down payments by a certain amount.
So this is gonna be revenue or expense neutral then?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what's gonna happen.
We're required by DOR to put this in.
Put what in?
We're required by DOR to have this voted on at town meeting, that's why it's on.
So they couldn't take it from another fund and just replenish that fund?
No, and we can't do a reballing account either, it had to be an article in town meeting.
Thanks.
Are there any questions about the, um?
We're just on the bus once. I think we've resolved all.
Uh, any questions on two A?
No.
Any questions on two B? Oh, yes, Mr. Floyd.
Uh, Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street, um, suggestion, the six tenths of an acre, zero being placed before the decimal point, uh, something in a meeting, looking at it, not great vision, we'll look at it, see, uh, six acres and not six tenths of an acre in a.
So we should have this say point zero six, would be helpful?
Wouldn't it be better if I just did it as a fraction, Robert? If I did six over ten?
That would be good, yeah, that would be.
Do a fraction.
Six slash.
You gotta put three fifths out.
Okay, I can do that.
It's in a couple places, so.
I know, it's in the.
Two, I have so far.
It's only two, there's two articles in CPA for, got it.
So any questions on two C? See, none, about article three, to create a revolving account for the weights and measures. Article four.
So just if we go back to three, we may have to, we have to double-check the contract on this number, but again, we were, were required by DOR to put this in, so this is the first year to our knowledge that we're actually collecting the weights and measures fees ourself. It's likely that we're going to go over the amount that we have to pay, but that money will go into free cash next year. So we only pay out. So we only pay out X, but we may collect Y. We get to collect, we get to pick the difference in the revolving fund next year.
So where's the money going to come from to figure that out?
Well, what happens is, we have to pay, what will happen is, for the state's contract, we don't pay them until the end, until they've finished all of their weights and measures pieces. So we've already collected the money from common law farms, from Big Y, so we already have it hanging out on this revolving account that we're creating. Then we pay them the money, whatever's left over is, just hangs out till next year and goes into free cash.
As long as we don't, as long as we voted at the town meeting, we don't vote it as a carry-forward fund. Because if you carry, if you, if you, if you vote as the revolving fund to be carried forward, those funds that are left there will be carried forward year after year. We can't vote it at the annual town meeting to be a carry-forward fund. We will vote it as a, kind of a single loan fund. So if there's five thousand dollars left there, that money will revert back to the general fund and more than likely.
Does that need to be specific in that article, or no?
No, just when we vote it at town meeting, then you would say this is not a.
So it would be part of the motion?
It would be part of the motion when we did it at town meeting, yes.
Can I add it as a note?
Yeah, you can add it as a note, I guess, yeah. Looks like we added a note for the bus fees. And the reason it can't go into revolving account, because under student activities, chapter forty-seven, there is no stipulation for bus fees under that particular mass general law. And when I called DOR, they talked to Jay Sullivan, who is the finance guy for the Department of Education, and he said it would be really stretching it if you put on the revolving account, and they would recommend it. So that's why we're not.
Okay. Article Four.
So when we get into these, these are the operating appropriations. So these are motions to move money from our current operating stabilization fund, which current balance, Vicki, is?
Well, I haven't moved the money that we did for fifteen. So, that's in there now. Operating, is one thirty-five oh eight one, so whatever we have to attract out of there, which is thirty-three thousand dollars for the wages for the police department. That leaves five thousand dollars for the dividend related. Yes, nine thousand, nine thousand, yes.
I know old bills, I thought we needed a nine tenths vote. I know the stabilization requires two-thirds vote, but don't you?
Well, that would suck with council.
But we have an old bill for another year's nine tenths vote. That's all.
Yeah.
We have about ninety-four thousand left. So we have about ninety-four thousand.
Okay, so that's Article Four. Article Five, any questions?
So Articles Four, Five, and Six are all to pay prior year's bills, and we'll check out whatever we need for the vote on that.
Article Seven?
So what Article Seven is, is this year we, we had our budget for the town hall's maintenance account for the building. And then we got a bill.
Larry building.
Larry building, yes. Then we got a bill for seven thousand dollars for the HVAC system. We didn't budget for this bill because we didn't pay this bill last, last fiscal year. We didn't pay the bill last fiscal year, because to the best of our knowledge, we never got the bill. That was something that came in before this fiscal year ended.
And we did it in the budget transfers at the end of the year, was the last one we did, so seventy-seven hundred dollars.
So for FY fourteen's, we were able to take it out of other funds, but the problem was, we didn't budget the seven thousand dollars just to take care of the HVAC. That dropped our current budget down to today, three hundred ninety-four dollars. That's not going to get us through the rest of the year, because we still have to do regular inspections on the building, and if anything else comes up. So what we're asking to do is replenish that seven thousand dollars, because we should have had it in the budget in the first place. We didn't know it was supposed to be in the budget.
May I ask a question? Do we have the elevator inspections in a budget?
We just had those done. We just have them done.
But are they in the budget?
They were in the original budget, but since the seventy-seven hundred dollars is in the budget, that's why we're looking for this money to be able to do that. Please, with the elevators and the fire.
Next year it'll be in the budget.
Is there any way?
Yeah.
Question I have is, because we're telling every department had to do this. You've got to change, you try to find it to work in your budget. I'm not being, I'm being serious.
No, I know you are.
Is there any latitude in any part of that budget that can offset this cost?
We only have three hundred ninety-four dollars in that budget.
I'm talking about the whole town hall budget. Custodian supplies, everything.
Uh-uh. We, we are, we have budgeted down to pretty much a penny.
I understand that, but I want to make sure we look at it.
No.
Okay.
Just, just to be able to cut our janitorial supplies in order to pay, that's one of the reasons we cut down the, the paper towels. We saved seven hundred ninety-four dollars.
All I'm saying is, we're starting a trend here for shortages.
Oh.
I'm not comfortable with it.
I understand.
What's that? Article Eight?
So this one is for the website, and I mean, it's up to the board if they want to move things over or not at this point. But what we're looking at is, we have the opportunity, we've been working with DJ, and we've been working with John Fitzpatrick, and we've been working with Art Lawrence, and we've been sitting down to go over what we need to do in order to move everything over to a new website platform essentially, or a hosting site, and even change the website. What we're looking at is a WordPress, which doesn't generally cost anything because it's just a template. But we're looking at switching it over to some hosting, for instance, like on GoDaddy or something. So we're still looking into what our best options are there. The rate's going to put us about the same as what we're at now, but the problem is, for the first time you start anything up, there's additional costs. You have to transfer things over, you have to pay for add-ons, you have to figure these things out. We may have, you know, we may be able to struggle by with what we have, but chances are we're not going to be able to get through it. Vicki, do you know what we have in that line item right now, the website?
Line?
Enter, no. Web page maintenance, three hundred twenty dollars and thirty-six cents.
So that was after we already paid one quarter, I think, for Jagify. So we still have three more to go, which will wipe out that piece, will leave no additional money to transfer things. And right now, we're still paying our, we're still using our email from Jagify, so if we switched over everything, it would cost more. Originally, last year, the budget for this was three thousand, and we don't have to do the one thousand. It's up to the town if they want to change the website now, or if they want to wait another year or two to do it. It's totally up to the town and the purview of the board, but in order to do it, it would cost about a thousand dollars. Reaction would come in probably a little bit less than that, but that's what it would cost us to move, move everything over.
What is it going to give us that we don't have now?
It's going to give us a functional website, the ability for each department and committee to modify their own page, so we don't have to send everything through one webmaster, the ability to actually understand the code. So there isn't any code. Right now, it's in HTML. So unless people want to take courses in HTML to become fluent, no one's touching the webpage right now, but John Fitzpatrick, who's getting burnt out, overwhelmed, so it's only going to be a matter of time before he says, "I'm all set," and then we're going to be really stuck.
Anybody have notice?
Goes right along with the master plan and the implementation.
That makes sense.
If we're going back to finances either, we're, we're, we're doing these things and it's going to bite us, in my feeling. I mean, I would like to have a great webpage too, but we, we have departments, primary departments are going to be running out of money, and we're going to tell them to stay within their means. And we have a seven thousand dollar bill here, and a thousand dollar bill here. What's going to happen in six months?
Seven thousand, it's unavoidable, I mean.
Well, I'm just wondering if we should look at some of this, some of the departments that, not departments, but some of the offices in the town hall, or even in the administrator's office that we haven't hit yet. Is there money savings there on wages? On the administrative assistant?
On mine? It's already reduced to eighteen hours a week instead of thirty.
I understand, you really didn't hire anybody until just recently. I didn't know if we had any savings there. I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to say, we need to look at.
We can calculate this.
Time to do the best we can with what we have before we go to this, this lever. Because I, what are we going to tell people when they come in here and say, "Well, you need another police officer, we need this, we need that"? You know, we're going to say we don't have it, cut. But in the meantime, we're giving out eight thousand dollars in these two articles, which we should be looking at, and see if there's some other money within the budget that was approved before we take this out of stabilization.
I mean, that makes sense, look at that line item and see if you can just transfer it to an expense item.
You still have to vote at that town meeting at the time.
I agree, I understand.
Or you have to wait till May, when we do that.
But the message we're giving by accepting and doing this is not a good message.
Yes.
So does the board want to keep Article Eight, or remove Article Eight?
Well, we have to change the article if we're going to transfer.
Leave those money there.
So it would be about six thousand ninety-one dollars, give or take, that we should have. Actually, you mentioned town, there's town and assistant. Actually, you know what? I take that back. It's probably closer to three thousand, because there's multiplication by higher number.
So you could vote to move the thousand dollars from that wage line to this expense account?
We can do that.
Instead of take it out of the stabilization fund?
And I know there's not a lot of money in, in the reserve, what, six thousand?
Six thousand, ten.
So does the board want to move the money from the town administrator wage line, or does the board want to remove the?
I got to ask, Vicki, can we move wage items this time of year?
No.
We have to. Well, if it's voted at the town.
Yeah, you go to town meeting.
Yes.
I, I think that's a great idea. Keeps them within their budget, and it makes it easier as we go to somebody else down the road.
If we have it to. We need to look at it.
So can you double check those numbers?
Yeah, we can definitely do the website without doubt on that one.
What we can do is, is look at last year's Larry building expenses and see what we paid out of there, and see if there was anything that was extraordinary that we probably won't come up with this year, and maybe come up with a different dollar figure, maybe it's not seven thousand, maybe it's.
Well, wasn't there, last year, we had to pay for five thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars for the air conditioning?
We paid about five thousand dollars for the air conditioning for the town hall building expenses, which is the building next door. So.
Well, we need to look at it.
But if we come up with some number, maybe it's not seven thousand, maybe it's only three thousand that we need, that, that we know we would need for the end of the year for this particular building. So we'll take a look at that.
Right.
If she can redo that.
So you'll rewrite number eight?
Yes.
To reflect those changes? Thank you. Article Nine. Oh, there they are. Board of Health. Article Nine. Hi ladies.
So you might want to tell them what Article Nine is.
Article Nine is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum not to exceed seven thousand dollars to the Board of Health. Expense account to demolish and clean the property known as Fifty-Nine Gun Road. Said some shall be taken from the operating stabilization account, or take any action related hereto, thereto.
So I think that's, I was not aware of this meeting tonight, not until about an hour ago. So essentially, just these monies are for Fifty-Nine Gun Road? Fifty-Nine Gun Road, where we had a, can I repeat that again?
Nope.
We had a multiple animal issue of multiple cats being hoarded by a homeowner. It presented a significant public safety risk. The Board of Health got a order of the Housing Board to do an entry and remove the animals, and essentially lock and preserve to make sure that the, nobody was going in there. I don't know what details you know about this site, but it's a condemned trailer, and without exaggeration, it's probably one of the most grotesque sites you would see. There's probably almost knee-deep in feces and cat litter in the trailer. There is an area outside the trailer that is, without exaggeration, probably fifteen feet long and about yay-high of old cat litter. And God knows what else in canisters on or around the property. The homeowner, at this point, is cooperating, at least on a limited basis, with the Board of Health has agreed to abandon the cats so that we could get them taken and adopted and cared for medically. It's actually all done by the Westfield Homes Cat Project for free in town of Southampton. At this point, however, we are left with the site, and the site needs to be handled. I'll tell the board that I'm going to be doing due diligence and negotiating with the homeowner to pay for the site removal, but we cannot wait in perpetuity, in my opinion, to let that happen. So we've explored some costs to have, you know, a third party come in and do it. I also have spoken with Charlie Nicky, who's here from the State Board of Health. He thinks it's a, it's a public safety risk to have the true house do it himself because of the potential diseases, contaminants, et cetera, with the removal of it. And Randall was at the site, he can tell you. And Randall, having been at the dump many times, this was far more expensive than a hundred times the dump on the worst day.
The transfer station?
Yeah, I would have. So bottom line, the, the most cost that we have at this time is seven thousand dollars, actually, eight thousand seven hundred dollars for a third party to come in, and then I'm just going to concur a three. The other price is five thousand eight hundred dollars. We think we can get these estimates skinnier, and again, we are hoping to have the homeowner upfront to pay for it. But in the event that he doesn't, or we can't arrange that, we want to not miss the special town meeting to allocate the funds for the cleanup. And the cleanup is only that, which is to make it safe for the public, for people going by. And this is, you can smell this from the road.
Is this taking the trailer off the property also?
Yes.
But not, nothing with the house?
No, the house is, is gone.
I took the house down twenty-five years ago.
This is just.
Isn't there a structure back there?
There's a barn.
Oh, okay, but that's staying up there?
No, it's going to.
That's part of this?
Yes.
Just on the other side of railroad tracks?
No, you're digging the yellow one.
Down the hill.
This is.
Right before the.
This is the one.
Before the Blueberry Farm.
After.
Blueberry Farm.
Right before the Blueberry Farm, coming down the hill.
You could miss it if you go by too far.
Absolutely, because it's all old ground.
Is that, are we able to lean the property?
I believe we can, and I, I have reason to believe from some partial due diligence that the lien will, we should have enough for the value of the property to get the money's back. I'm not asking for, you know, there shouldn't be that much money to remove. It's actually less than what I expected it to be. So, and, and again, I think we can get these estimates skinnier. They're talking about removal of the foundation and other stuff. We don't need to do that. We just want to make it safe for the public. So we're going to be going back to the drawing board with these people to get better estimates and to make it more narrow, given what our scope is. And like I said, I'll, I'll be attempting to have the owner cooperate with us in front, hey, there's a small possibility he will do that. If he has the means, I'm sure I can get him to do that, it's a matter of means.
What kind of company goes in and does this work?
I believe this, the folks we have right now is associated with building wreckers and western mass demolition. With the exception of if there is asbestos, then we need a specialized company. At this point, we don't really anticipate that.
They could add, up for the cost.
They could add, they could add to it, but that's something that we'll have to, again, do more due diligence on.
There's nothing else on the property other than that cat byproduct, right? There's no oils or anything like that?
Not that we're aware of, no. There's canisters, they're all closed. I did not look in them. I did not want to.
Somebody's going to.
Well, if you get Charlie, Charlie looking, tell him he did that for me before. And you got somebody else to get rid of them.
Well, if we get a certification from the removal and confirmed by the board, by the building inspector, if they do a proper environmental demolition, then I don't really care what's in them, as long as it's done appropriately.
My, my biggest concern that there is a scream or a, a revenue that'll offset how we have to go after this one.
I believe that there is, and I have, without saying it publicly, I have reason to believe that he has some encroam source that may be offset, you know, contribution in the future if we spend the money. And I'm not going to do it without a significant due diligence.
But the ju, and you've already been issued an order by the judge, right?
Yes. Well, just for clarification, I've already received a temporary restraining order to access, remove, and secure, and to prevent him from going back in there. I don't have an order for me to go in and, you know, do the remedial work. Right, I don't have that yet. If I don't get his agreement to do it, then I will, then I will do that. But I'm not going to do it unless the board's selectmen already approves the funding for it, or puts it on the article, because there's no point in me getting it approved if we can't pay for it.
How does the lien process work?
Well, I can answer that.
Okay.
It, it says, any other lien that you put on property, if, if we're spending money on behalf of a third person and they're responsible for paying it back, you put a, a notice with the registry of deeds of how much that is owed. And in the event that we get paid back, we remove the lien. So we basically put a lien in the registry of deeds with the amount that's expended on the property.
We have to go to court and get the lien approved, or can we?
Well, if, if it's a leaning process, a formal lien process as opposed to by agreement, I'd have to go back to Housing Board.
And that lien carries a six percent interest rate.
It does. We've done that in the past on properties similar to this. And it took time, but, you know, it's not like we were out without receiving. We ended up getting it eventually.
Well, I'm somewhat hopeful that we can get this done by agreement of the owner.
Good.
But I want to back a plan. I don't want to miss the, the window of the, the special town meeting.
Is he still in town, or?
He is not in town. He's living with family. Do I have any objections from the board?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Article Ten, amend dog license fees. Increase the dog fees to ten dollars for a fixed animal and fifteen for a non-fixed animal.
So this is just a preliminary draft of this amount, of this article. We don't have a formalized language. We do have Denise, who has sent out.
We do have Janine, who has sent out something to the town clerks' list serve, see if we can get some official language on this one. And if we don't, then we'll have to go through town council to get the official lingo. But when we did our meeting with the Finance Committee to revise some of our license fees, we did come across legislation that stated that in order to increase dog fees, we had to go to a town meeting for approval.
What are they currently?
Um, seven.
Seven eleven? I think eleven for seven and eleven.
When was the last time they were increased?
I don't know, nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty?
Well, that's gonna be, you're gonna be asked.
I, we, we'll get the information, we'll have Janine with the info. I don't have the answer in front of me, unfortunately.
Is it, can I ask the question, well, this is a topic? So, I, yeah, I wasn't aware as was on tonight, so, and just coincidentally, I've been speaking with Randall about our dog officer and lack thereof, and the multiple calls that we, we in the town have been getting. It's important to differentiate between the dog officer job and the animal inspector job. Just to clarify, the animal inspector is hired by the Board of Health, it's a stipend position, that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is dog officer. Just to give you guys some feedback, we, the Board of Health, have been getting involved with dog calls because I think of confusion as to who's domain it is to handle them. I can tell you it's a significant burden, it's an economic burden, it's, we're trying to figure out how to, to handle it within the departments and come up with a creative solution, but these are not enough to cover what this is costing our town to handle cats, dogs, et cetera.
We have a dog inspec, a dog officer?
We had a dog officer, we had three of them.
I don't think we have one currently, although I can't answer that question, it's typically under the DPW dog. So we got some.
Need to figure out what to do about that.
Yes, and I can tell you we need more money to do it.
In years past, that position was combined too.
Can we regionalize that with Hoylek? Can't Hoylek send a dog officer?
I think there was some preliminary investigation, it's pretty expensive. You were gonna look further in Springfield, do you have any success?
Well, not for, here, here's the problem, DPW was paying people out of their pay for the differential salary of the dollar.
No. What they were doing was they trained the person, they gave them that dollar when they were called. If they were called off-hours, they got time and a half, but that money was billed to the dog officer's account, that is in the clerk's office. And that money was done on a, a monthly basis, a bill would go in for that dollar, and any overtime related to that job would come out of dog, dog fund. Didn't supposed to come out of the Highway Department budget. It was specifically to be taken out of the dog fund.
Well, I guess, how much did the clerk's office say we're giving for dog licenses for? So for Town of Southampton, it's taken four thousand dollars, getting in?
We're getting forty-eight hundred dollars left, I knew, when I was there.
We just asked.
I'm just telling you what we.
She told me four thousand dollars. So we have four thousand dollars in dog licenses to handle dog issues, cat issues.
No, it's not cat issues, it's only dog issues.
Well.
I'm just telling you. I know, I, I set it up and I worked on it.
How much would it cost to have a dog officer, in your opinion? How much would it cost us?
If it's, if it's a standalone position, I think it would be too much. So, so I can't give you that answer. What I would tell you is it should be added on to an existing position, so that it could be carried by another department, and so that another person, because you don't need somebody twenty-four-seven just being a dog officer, there's other functions that can be done when you're not doing dog officer work.
Does East Hampton have one, where we can contract or something?
No, trust me.
All right, so can we do some research on this and put this back on an agenda, so that we can have a conversation and come up with a solution?
Right, so, so the point is though, is to get it, you know, raise rates, correct? So I'm all in favor, we need to raise the rates, we don't have enough money coming in, we have people who have animals, those people are the ones that should bear the cost of, of what we need the money for in the town. So, let's increase the cost.
In two thousand fourteen, we collected forty-four hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents in dog licenses.
And that was with the licenses being seven and eleven dollars?
Yes.
Yes.
So can somebody figure out what it would cost, how much we're gonna get if we increase them by this much?
I have to find out how much.
How many fixed and how many non-fixed animals you have, in order to calculate.
Basically, it's gonna be fifty percent more on the seven dollar one, or forty-some percent.
Okay.
You may get an extra two grand out of it. That'll do the job, right?
Yeah, and the other thing I don't really answer to do, because it just popped in my head, is the fines, there should be fines associated with strays, and those fines should go back into the budget used to support that position. I don't know if fines are part of what the clerk's office quoted me, is the income we get for licenses, et cetera. So that needs to be looked at. And I, I propose it be done, looked at, whoever was doing the job before the Board of Health, because we can collaborate to reduce the cost of it.
This, I'll just give you a quick synopsis. Those three people that were trained at the Highway Department were trained, they had a ten-week course, they had to go to, they, they learned everything, all right? What we did when they came back in here, they were giving us stipend to go out during the day, it was a dollar stipend to go out during the day to take care of dogs, and sometimes help the animal, the Board of Health person. It wasn't a big burden. Then, so we got called out on the weekends, usually one went out or two went out, but there was always a police officer to help them, okay? We built a kennel, there was a kennel that we had, but we didn't wanna take care of them for weekends, so we dealt with Westfield Animal Control. And Westfield Animal Control very rarely sends us a bill for boarding, and that, they went after the person who came to pick up the dog. So they got their fees out of the homeowner through the, uh, when they came to pick up the dogs. And that worked well for several years, okay? I don't know if you, you wanna talk to Westfield, about Westfield?
I already talked to Westfield, and I respect, it's not gonna work, let's just say that. So I, I called Westfield and called.
Well, it worked very well with us before, so.
Well, let me, let me make a caveat, I, I called the town of Westfield to talk to them about using their resources as an, as, you know, maybe they can throw a little bit of more money and be cheaper. It's not gonna work. I tried. So, I'm open to other suggestions, but bottom line is, we need, we need to raise the licenses.
So you'll get the language fixed on that, knowing that the board is opposed to raising the license fees, so positive news.
Is that a, that fee, is that a standard fee that's being charged elsewhere?
The ten and fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
I talked to Janine, she said two of the communities around East Hampton and Westfield, I believe, charge that, other communities in this state charge more. So that's, that's an okay standard. It's better to at least bring us up to par. We're getting closer to the norm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that a question? What's up?
No, I'm, you know, I know that money's really, really tight, but could we take some of this, a little bit of this money and give it to local shelters for animals?
I don't think we have enough money to pay our dog officer now.
I know, but I mean, just something.
So we could have a fundraiser, and you could bring the food to an election.
And good faith for the animal owners in the, in the town, knowing that some of that money will be given to, you know, to help animals.
Well, I, I would concur with the fact that we don't have enough money to be domaining it, but what I would say is that the Town of Southampton, through its publication of its efforts with this trailer issue and thirteen cats, was able to help the shelter that took these animals, great raise money. And we continue to collaborate with them, and foster really good relationships with this particular shelter. And I would not, I, I would imagine that if she were to be asked about the fairness of our relationship, she would not feel it would be inequitable at this point. So I wouldn't be reaching into her pockets to be donating money right now, we can't afford to pay somebody to go catch the dog that are around town.
Right, I know, I just wanted to help that shelter, because I know that lady, and I know she does a lot of great work, and just appreciate, yeah.
And things that I wanna let you both go.
At least you could think like that.
Randall?
I think Bree and I are gonna come in and talk to Heather tomorrow, and kind of throw out some options, and what we're gonna need to run.
Thanks.
So.
Maybe the second graders could do it.
For the animal?
Just so you know.
So, just as a caveat, just a footnote, you know, we can't just have anybody do this, because, and we can't use other towns. If, if some of you may recall, we used East Hampton once to be an animal inspector when we were, as a backup, when we had multiple animals and needed more hands, that animal inspector had, had attacked, and we ended up paying medical bills for it. So we can't afford to be using neighboring towns to fill these functions if they're not, if there's no reciprocity agreements, and there's no home agreements to, to pay them and compensate them and make them a, a quid in town employee.
Could we do it that way, contract with them, pay them X amount of dollars per year?
If, if, yeah, if we're gonna pay somebody X amount of dollars a year, if the people who are here are willing to do it.
Well, but they have a dedicated dog officer, right? We're gonna have to get somebody who's willing to do it, send them ten weeks to a course, you said, Ed?
What's that?
We sent those three people? Now we have three people?
It's a ten, ten-week course every Friday, not ten, five days a week.
Three people who all of a sudden said, "I don't want to do it anymore."
No, it's a little more complicated than that.
Well, you know what I'm saying, yeah, it's.
One retired, one.
But now we gotta go train for ten weeks, if we can hire somebody that's fully trained, and I'm just.
Well, let's see what kind of solutions and, you know, things that Randall and Bree can come up with with Heather, and we can move forward from there. But it's on our radar now. Great, thank you so much. Article eleven, last one, to see if the town will accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two F, to permit the town to set fees in addition to those provided by the general laws. Heather, what does that mean?
Uh, yes, this was voted once upon a time by town meeting. What happened with the vote at town meeting was the language seemed to come out that it said for the municipal clerk to set the fees. This is standard language to adopt in towns and municipalities, essentially, it allows the individual departments and those who set fees for specific things to go above and, above or outside of what is set in the master of laws for certain things. Some things are antiquated, just an example, not necessarily that this would be one that you apply, but if you think about a notarization of a document, it can take up to half an hour, and the current fee for master of laws is not to exceed a dollar something. So, you know, it's one of those things that it allows you to go above and beyond the master of laws that had not been touched in many years, certain ones that you can't touch anyway, they actually have an exception, exclusion to this MGL right in the actual language of the MGL, so you'll know you can't go above and beyond. But this is recommended to us also by council, and also by DLS, uh, DLS to adopt this. Again, we once tried to do this, and we did, but we adopted it kind of in a weird language that said just for our municipal clerk to do so, which doesn't even make sense, because we have a town clerk, not necessarily called a municipal clerk, so questions, who are you referencing?
Well, you're gonna, this is, the verbiage is now to let department head set the rates?
No, the department, the language says for the town, but essentially, what happens is anyone in charge of the fees, as I spoke with our attorney on it, has the ability to actually set their rates, as long as it's not prohibited by the MGLs. A lot of times, that means the Board of Selectmen is going to be the ones who over, have oversight on the rates setting. What this allows is that you don't have to be limited in certain cases by the master of law that may say, okay, this license can, you cannot exceed this amount when you charge for it. This provision allows you to go above and beyond. Certain things are antiquated, um, like I said, the notary thing, a dollar something for, for our process is just crazy. But if you allow yourself to have this provision in place, it allows you to go above and beyond and makes more logical sense of things.
Robert?
I suggest the new National Reboot, Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two F be part of it, or underneath it, so we can see what that is, and kind of make some explanations for it.
Very good.[1660.37]